We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 to discuss some confidential employee matters. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
I'm actually sitting next to Dr. David Hurst. Congratulations on your doctorate. Chris Meyer.
Wendy Sampson.
Willow Bear.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moriarty.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Christine Bev.
And Judy Kehoe.
First up is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 5, 2021 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 18, 2021 special board meeting of the annual budget vote and Board of Education election.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. And next is our superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the community for overwhelmingly supporting the budget and the bus propositions. I'll turn it to Judy in a second just to talk about this next steps for the electric buses, to clarify that process. I'd like to congratulate Willow for staying with us for the next few years, and congratulations to Catherine, who's here with us this evening as well. Looking forward to working with both of you. And just Judy, if you could maybe comment on the next steps with the electric bus purchases in that whole process and where we are.
Sure. So the approval of the community of that proposition gives us the necessary legal authority to make those purchases. The proposition was contingent on the district obtaining the funding from NYSERDA, where we had applied for their truck vehicle incentive program grants, which would give us $200,000 per bus. Our application is submitted. We've been going back and forth with them on some questions. We expect to hear any day now, and we will announce that as soon as we do hear. Five is the maximum. Of course, it's possible that they might award two or three, or you know, something short of five, but whatever it is, we're prepared to make that purchase. And then we will get the charging stations in place and have the buses here and ready to go as soon as they're off the manufacturing line.
Great, thank you.
And I'd like to really thank Judy and Karim for all their work on the electric bus information. It was a lot of work, and I think it's great that we are one of the first districts to move forward in this, so thanks.
Thank you.
I'd also just like to remind everyone, or give an update on masks in schools. We did send something out a short while ago. Many places now, under the governor's new orders, are allowing exemptions from wearing masks, both indoors and outdoors. However, schools are under different guidance, and so schools currently are still under requirements that masks are to be worn both indoor and outdoor, on school property and at school events. So we will keep everyone updated if that changes, but that is the current guidance.
And Jody, just to clarify, school events includes athletic events?
Athletic events, any co-curricular, off-school-property events, any school-sponsored events are under that guidance currently. Also, in June, I will be offering some parent meetings. I'm also doing some staff meetings to respond to any end-of-the-year questions people might have, and I think mostly people may have questions about the fall and what do we anticipate that looking like. I'm not exactly sure what that is because we don't have guidance. I'm hoping by June, we'll have some indication of what will be required to do. So on June 8, at 10:30, and June 9, at 6:30 at night, we will be offering a couple parent forums. And as we've done in the past, families will be able to submit questions in advance that we hopefully can make sure we respond to as many as possible. So that's coming up, and we will send something out about those meetings. Also, we partnered with Miller Young Pharmacy, and we'll be offering a vaccine clinic for students at the Jericho Drive-In this Saturday. I'd like to thank Dr. Young and his team, as well as Dr. Patel, who offered our prior clinic, who's also working with him to help offer this clinic for our families. We've also provided families with other options locally. We sent that out today in our communication, and we'll continue to let families know where they can get vaccine appointments. It seems to be relatively easy for people to get appointments relatively quickly, so that's good news. And at this point, I do want to introduce a couple individuals who are here with us this evening. Jennifer Murphy-Fries is our new K-12 Family Consumer Science Health and Phys Ed Supervisor, who's here to say a little welcome. And also, Daniel Hash is our new K-12 ELA Supervisor. So we told them they could come early and leave early. So I don't know if one of you wants to say a little welcome first or not.
Yes, I can go first.
Sure, thank you.
Right here. Okay.
Hold on one second, you're gonna get a microphone.
Okay, I can go there, whatever's needed.
Hello, hello? Can everyone hear me okay?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here in person this evening. My name is Jennifer Murphy-Fries, and I am thrilled to accept the K-12 Health, Physical Education, and Family Consumer Science Supervisor position here at BC. I am so excited to be joining this community that is student-centered and works diligently to ensure students have the best overall educational experience possible. I am very much looking forward to developing relationships with students, family, faculty, and staff. A little bit about myself, I'm originally from Niagara Falls, New York, and moved to the Capitol District in 2009. I come from a large family, including a twin sister that lives in San Antonio, Texas. I have a bachelor's degree in physical education from SUNY Cortland, a master's degree in health education from Russell Sage College, and a certificate of advanced study and educational leadership from Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. This June, I will be finishing my third year at Albany Academy for Girls, serving as the Director of Athletics. Previous to this position, I taught K-12 Health and Physical Education, as well as coached in New York public schools for eight years. I enjoy staying involved in professional organizations in our area and beyond. I'm looking forward to learning and growing at Bethlehem Central School District. Thank you all again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hash. Again, I also want to thank the Board and administrators for inviting me tonight to express my gratitude and excitement, taking over the next position of ELA Supervisor K-12. My biggest responsibility coming to the district is to support the amazing foundation you have regarding literacy and to build upon it. I believe you have developed a rigorous but attainable set of literacy goals in your strategic plan, and I intend to draw upon my experiences first as an ELA teacher, then as a member of the Office of State Assessment, and finally as a K-12 Administrator, to help to achieve these. So thank you again for your continued trust and support.
Welcome to both of you. And given Dan and Jen's presence with us now, and so they don't have to stick around, can I get a motion to move Item 6C, Professional Personnel Action Items?
So moved.
On the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Professional Personnel Action Items, 1 through 14.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries.
You're official.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming.
You guys can scoot out now.
I was gonna say, feel free.
Congratulations. That concludes my superintendent's report also.
Judy, I know that we were with staff sort of tracking vaccination rates. Are we tracking student rates of vaccination as well? Do we have a list?
We, so the vaccine clinic that we held here, we had all the information, so we've entered that into our Health Master system. And we did send a note out to parents asking if they vaccinated, if their child's been vaccinated elsewhere, to please notify the nurse's office, so we can document that as well. So we'll do a follow-up after this weekend's clinic as well, although we should be able to get that. But I know a lot of parents have contacted me saying they were able to get appointments at Hannaford or SUNY, so we'll do a reminder, please contact us, because it helps, especially now, many colleges are requiring it, so they often will contact, the students will contact the school over the summer and say, can I get my immunization information, and to have that moving forward. So I don't have exact numbers now, but I would say that we probably have 800 to 900 students who have at least received their first vaccine.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
In terms of the reopening meetings, so the state is saying they're gonna come out with something in June, is that the best hope or guess?
The state didn't really say.
I don't know that the state has said that June is their deadline.
We would like some guidance by June.
No, I'm just saying, because as a district, we can't make a plan until we're given the guidelines, so we're just...
Well, to some extent. So we do have the updated CDC guidance that was released in March sometime, and New York State pretty much adopted in April. So I guess in some regards, we do have some indication that it seems like distancing will be reduced. So some of those things, the unknowns are the transportation piece with distancing, some of those pieces that have the six-foot requirement still, for example, in eating and distance between students and staff. What's not obviously part of that is the, come the fall, students pretty much in grade seven through 12 will have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. And the current guidance from DOH is that if you are fully vaccinated, you won't be required to quarantine if there's an exposure. I'm guessing that will all apply to students as well. So I think that some of the, we do have some indication of what it might look like, but that some of those pieces, we did send a letter, a joint letter, to all the local health departments and some of the representatives to please help, you know, clarify some of that for the fall. The other piece that's an unknown is will there be the request, or will we, schools be required to offer a remote option for students, and if so, what students would be considered for that? That's a big piece that we don't have any information on. So I'm hopeful that maybe by June, that's why I scheduled the meetings, that we'll have some more information on it. But if not, we'll do the best we have with what, you know, what we have. We can't wait till, you know, July and early August to plan, so we have to just start planning based on what we have.
Yeah, no, I was just curious in terms of like, you know, can we use our cafeteria again, you know? Is that a thing, you know? Can we have 25 kids in a room again? Like, where are we on those things? So we'll wait and see.
Yeah.
The other wild card is the expiration associated with vaccines and in the middle of the fall, when everyone's vaccine needs a booster, and now it's a whole new...
Right, right. And there's been mixed information on that, how long that will be, so. Yeah, Meredith?
Your name thing.
You lost your name.
Subliminal messages about your...
Where did it go?
It's just right in front of the table.
Oh, I see. In case people...
I was trying to be subtle.
Thank you.
We remember your name.
Thank you.
We know who you are. All right, I'm gonna move us on.
Thanks, Meredith.
To the, unless anybody has any other questions for Jody. To the Board report, I also wanted to thank the community for the support of the budget and all of the bus propositions. It was, it ended up kind of being a little bit of a social event, I think, having people come out in person to vote. I saw a few people in the gym that I haven't seen in at least nine months, if not longer. And I just wanted to welcome you, Catherine. We look forward to working with you on the Board. And we're not quite done with you yet, but I did want to say a little preliminary thank you, Chris, for your service on the Board.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
I would.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
You were right about a social event of voting. I took my father to vote, and it was the first time, other than to see doctors, that he's been out to see anybody else. So he enjoyed it. But more importantly, the musical that was put on, we, I was able to figure out how to put it on our large-screen TV. So I felt very good, because I didn't have one of my kids tell me how to do it. I was able to do it. We had a wonderful evening. It was, it was really, it was well-done, well-staged. My father thought he was gonna learn a little bit more about Einstein. I had to explain that to him, but he enjoyed it, and I thoroughly would love to see that kind of performance. I understand there are rights issues, but if there are ways to stream in the future or to do this kind of one-on, I think it's a really good thing, because it's not something we've done before, but it really was very nice that if, you know, if you can't get out, it's something that, you know, the people in the community can't get out. And it's something that I think would be a very positive thing. The other thing I was able to do was I looked at the art exhibits that were online. In the past, I've been able to go to the concourse, where often we have a lot of our young artists exhibiting their work. This time, that wasn't available, but online, it was really well-done. We have a lot of talent in our school, and just a big thank you to all the art teachers and to the student artists themselves. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Jonathan.
I just wanted to thank the community again for the positive vote for the budget and also the electric buses and the GPS, all bus propositions. I'm so excited about these electric buses. I know people from other districts all of a sudden are like, wait, what? Bethlehem's getting electric buses? Is this something we can do in the Northeast? I think a lot of people have not even thought that this is possible to do in the Northeast. So I'm really excited that we're a leader in this. When the buses do finally, you know, roll off the factory, I would love for us all to go see them and see, like, what is this gonna look like? How is it gonna sound? You know, like, make a real big deal of it, because it is a huge deal. And, you know, I know there's like, you know, the state of Minnesota or something has like naming contests for their snowplows. I think it'd be really fun if we had a naming, like, school-wide naming contest for each of these buses. They could each have like, you know, Sparky, or like, you know, Electric Bugaloo, or something like that, I don't know. But I think we could have a lot of fun with these buses, and I just can't wait to see them.
Actually, that's a very cute idea.
Yeah.
Like, the elementary kids, I think, would have a lot of fun with that.
The inaugural and a ride-along.
Naming the buses.
Absolutely. I think we should have like a ribbon-cutting ceremony and everything. I think it'd be great.
But you may be interested to know that the model of the bus that we would purchase is called a JU-LIE, not spelled J-U-L-I-E, but like the electric unit, J-O-U-L-E-Y.
We could have some fun with that.
We could have some fun with that, indeed.
Thanks, Meredith. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say, it's nice seeing everybody come out to sporting events as well. It just, you can see that the community's starting to, their spirits are picking up, and I'm one of them, so I'm enjoying getting out and seeing a few things outside. And then last night at the budget vote, it was nice, a lot, I saw a few community members sticking their head in the new auditorium, and it was, it's just so beautiful, and I'm excited when it's finally open and we can all come in and enjoy the new amenities, because it's gonna be great.
Thanks, Christine. Anybody else?
I'll just add that, I'll second the sound quality on the streaming for the High School Musical was, it was really great. It sounded great, it looked great, very glad that that went off. And I'm looking forward to seeing the Middle School Musical as well, so good luck to the middle school kids doing "Your Good Man Charlie Brown," which is a fun show to do, so looking forward to that. But yeah, it's been, it's been a good week as far as, you know, everybody coming out and doing the vote and getting outside, and it's very positive. We've had a very positive week here, so yay.
Thanks, Wendy.
Do we know, Jody, how many people, less people came out and voted this year, or was it from last year?
Well, last year, we had a lot, because it was all paper ballot, but what was the total from two years ago, Judy? We were up...
Two years ago was about 2,400 out at the polls, so we were pretty much spot-on with that for this year.
But last year was like, what, 5,000?
5,000.
Which is kinda crazy. I wish we could still utilize that in some way, but...
As long as they can be counted by hand, I think that Jody would be okay with that.
I know, I know.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
I understand, but it was, you know, just to see that turnout was amazing.
Yeah.
It was over, a little over 3,000, was it?
2,400.
2,400.
Oh, 2,400.
Round numbers.
And what was the number this year?
About 2,400.
This year?
Yeah.
Yeah, 5,000 last year.
And in 2019?
Yeah, including the absentees, we were up to 2,050 and change.
And what were the figures for 2019?
About the same. About the same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was last year with all the paper ballots. We had the fight, yeah.
That's an anomaly. But...
Next up on our agenda is our presentation this evening. We are having a presentation on the 2020, 2021, what am I talking about? The 2021 Capital Project Overview.
Thank you. I'll kick things off and then turn it over to Greg on this. So we announced that we were getting ready to start this, and we've been slowly rolling out the information on that. And our initial meetings, we're trying to familiarize you with the broadest elements or the most expensive elements of the program, and the highest priority items as well. In that five-year facilities plan, we ranked the items that absolutely should be done, because the items have reached the end of their useful lives. Obviously, there's a lot of elements that aren't too glamorous, but they are necessary. So there are roofing elements, paving elements, boiler work, and things like that, renovations of bathrooms. But there were also some more visible projects that we started with for these presentations. So we did have close to $47 million worth of projects identified on the entire five-year facilities plan, which is available on the website. We have the, what we're calling the shortlist, of about $35 million in items. And what we wanted to focus on tonight was to answer the questions that the Board had raised at the last meeting. So just a quick reminder on the next slide, because of the capital reserves that we have built up over the last few years, and because of our high building aid ratio that the state funds us at 70% of the eligible costs, we believe that the entire project will be budget-neutral, which means that our local share is going to be fully offset by the use of those capital reserves. So it's a very great, strong position to be in to enable this work to be done with the lowest possible impact to the community on their pocketbooks. If you go to the next slide, that's just a quick breakdown of all of the projects, just so you can get a sense of the scale, and again, go to the website and you can drill down and see the specifics for each of those buildings. So that's the quick recap of where we're at. I'm going to turn it over to Greg at this point, and he will answer the questions that you had on the synthetic turf, and then also on the middle school tech classrooms.
Thank you, Judy. Let me first apologize for my casual attire from the waist down. Let me first apologize for my casual attire from the waist down. I thought we were doing this meeting here soon.
At least you have pants on.
It's okay Greg, we don't-
So, there were, as Judy mentioned, there was a number of questions from the board about synthetic turf at our last meeting that we promised that we would answer. So, tonight, connected remotely, we have Ed Keplinger and Lisa Weinberg. They are our landscape architects that are working with Ashley McGraw and Drew Jones as well is on the line. So, any questions that I will not be able to answer, they should be able to answer. Okay.
Oh, I see somebody.
It's Drew.
Okay, so, the proposed location of the field, the field is actually the largest component of the Vonn project at the high school. The design team, along with district stakeholders, pretty much identified that the existing grass field number two, that's shown on the yellow arrow, was pretty much the best location for the field due to its proximity to support facilities and, and the parking lots. As you can see, it's just off of E-Wing and you'll be able to see this pretty much from Delaware Avenue. Again, it's not the stadium field that you can see along Van Dyke. So, why synthetic turf? You know, all of our fields are heavily used in the spring, the fall, even, even the summertime. A synthetic field will expand our ability to use these fields throughout the entire year. Some, some organizations will even plow off snow to allow users on it. And of course, the field will be used by both phys ed and athletics. It will minimize the need to have practices on non-district locations, which you actually saw this year, or this past year, we used quite a bit. It'll reduce the times that we will have to, if not eliminate, that we would have to shift a game to a different location or cancel games due to wet weather because the fields are just too wet. So, to recap, just generally, the proposal will include bleachers, lights, scoreboards, concession area, a press box and safety curtains, a mid-level curtain that will allow multiple practices to happen on the field at once. So, general construction of a field. I had a little red pointer that I was going to point at things, but it doesn't show up apparently on the screen. So, basically, you, you rough grade the area. Your first layer is kind of, it's a larger stone, it's your subbase, and that's where your drainage is. Then we would install a basically smaller stone called a choker level, right here. And above that, you have what they call a shock pad and then the actual artificial carpet. Now, within that carpet, they, they basically put an infill of, it can be sand and small beads of rubber, commonly referred to as crumb rubber. And this helps with traction and, and cushion on, on the field. Grooming will happen, field grooming will happen throughout the year by the O&M department. This is needed, it'll basically clean out any, any debris that will accumulate in, in the rubber and it will also provide a constant depth on the, on the field. So, here are some answers to your questions from the previous presentation. With the advancements of artificial turf over the years, life spans have been extended. Turf companies typically offer an eight-year warranty, but a project like this, we would require an additional four years, so we would have a 12-year warranty. With proper maintenance, this field should last about 15 years. So, the rubber infill is typically removed, those little beads that I talked about, is removed during artificial turf replacement. Infield, the infill that gets removed typically is sent to a facility and that it has its foreign particles removed, it's cleaned, and then it's repackaged and is used for new fields. So, it's very probable that the infill material that we will get will have been recycled from another field. There are some companies that are recycling the actual carpet into other products, the actual green grassy part of it. General cost to replace an artificial turf field is about $750,000 to $950,000. And that replacement includes the disposal of the company is recycling the old carpet, the installation of the new carpet, and of course, that crumb rubber layer. The drainage that I, that I showed you earlier, that's underneath, would not have to be replaced at this time. That remains, that remains good. So, there are different types of crumb rubber infill, but I'm going to, I'll discuss that on a later slide. SBR is the most common and there's also EPDM, rubber infill. These materials are not considered solid waste, and this is as per New York State DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation. So, in turn, this crumb rubber is not considered hazardous waste or regulated waste. So, there is really no standard for the disposal of artificial turf and costs vary. But to specifically answer your question from the last presentation, we estimated disposal costs of about $125,000 to $150,000. And that's assuming about 100,000 square foot complex. Okay, and that's probably what we are proposing.
So, is, is that on top of the cost in number three on this slide? Or is it, is it-
No.
Part of that number?
It is included.
Okay.
That's the cost, number three is the cost to replace, but since we're not replacing now, what's the cost to install new?
So, I, I believe that the entire line item for everything is, is about $5 million. And that is identified on, on the plan.
Maybe you'll get to it, but will you get to the cost of the equipment to clean? Cause you mentioned that it would be taken out, the, the fill would be taken out. Is that coming up?
Yes, so, within that $5 million cost, is, we can purchase the grooming equipment necessary? That's basically a-
It includes the grooming equipment.
I'm sorry, what?
It includes, the 5 million includes the grooming equipment.
Correct. And that would be purchased as part of this project.
Thank you.
So, there are different types of the fill material. These provide again cushion and traction for, for the users. SBR, as I mentioned, is, is the most common and is referred to as crumb rubber. It's the most widely used in synthetic fields at all levels. And basically, this is just recycled tires. We have alternative materials, one being EPDM. It's basically a virgin material that is not made from recycled tires, but it's basically manufactured the same, it's in the same process as, as SBR. Envirofill is large round acrylic coated sand particles. Brockfill is actually wood, engineered wood particles. That however, is a relatively new product without much testing. And so, we don't really know how it performs over time and how long it'll last. At the last meeting, somebody mentioned cork as, as, as an infill. That's not necessarily used in this northeast region. Apparently, rain and snow tends to float the material. So, it's not something that we would spec for our project.
So, are you saying if you use one of the alternative sources, it would reduce the 5 million to whatever? So, if it was $5 times-
No, it would actually, it would increase.
You're adding it to do, okay.
Yeah, so on that slide, I gave square foot costs, okay? We're probably going to build an 80,000 to 100,000 square foot facility. The actual field itself might be about 50,000 square feet, but when you put everything else around, around it and the sides, so when you see the, the square footage, that's in addition to the cost of the SBR. So, if we want to go with EPDM, it's going to add probably another $100,000 to, to the project.
Maybe I missed something, but it, if the SBR is made out of old tires, how is it not a hazardous material? Because tires are declared a hazardous material.
It- I, well, I don't know. Maybe I'll let Ed or Drew respond. I, I'm not sure if, tires I don't think are considered hazardous. I think-
Well, every time you go and get, you, you replace your tires, there's a hazardous waste charge.
Well, there's a disposal fee.
A disposal for recycling, I believe.
Can Ed or Drew comment upon this?
Yes, I can. This is Ed Keplinger. Good evening everyone. There's a tire disposal fee that's not, the tires are not considered hazardous. That's so there's, so the tires aren't littering the landscape.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
My, my question about the fill is just this, is that, you know, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, like, there are other districts right in our area that'll have these. So, what are they using? Like, cause I'm sure, I know that, I know North Colony did the research, this is a topic there. I know other districts have done this. So, like, what are they using? Cause I think that might solve our problem and if they, if it's past practice on this.
Ed, can you speak to the, the number?
We've been, we've been putting in turf fields for over 15 years. We've done these studies for other districts. They've all ended up going in with the SBR rubber. We've, we've done the investigation into other products, but it's, we've always fallen back to the SBR rubber. That, when the, more, more touring occurred back in 2008, there was a district that went with a, the Tiger turf, it was a sand infill system. They kind of look back and regret that they went that direction because it's just not the, the same playable surface as the SBR rubber.
Thank you.
As long as we're on the topic, can I just ask another question about the, the crumb rubber? I'm envisioning little pieces of tire, you know, mixed in with green grass. Is this something that's underneath the artificial grass or is it kind of mixed in? Like, are, are the athletes going to be exposed to, to the crumb rubber if they make contact with the grass?
Yes, it's, it's mixed into the grass. It's like your thatch layer.
Okay.
Okay.
But is it something like, is it going to be coming up, little pieces of rubber?
No, I mean, it's, it's there, it's weighted. Gravity will hold it down, but if you see, if you watch football games, you know, when they're going out of bounds and they drag their foot and you see this little rooster tail, well, that's the crumb rubber, you know, kind of popping up and then going right back down.
And can you just, I'm not sure I understand what the EDPM is, like what it is made out of.
Okay.
Can you clarify that?
It is ethylene propylene dimine monomer rubber. It's just roofs, there's EPDM roofs. It's just a product, but it's a virgin product. So, instead of me taking tires and grinding them up, I'm going to take this material and create my little beads of, of rubber.
Okay, so both the EDPM and the SBR are both rubber?
Rubber products, yes.
Just one comes from tires, the other one comes from, they just make it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, next slide. So, there were, we had some conversations at the last presentation about health concerns related to synthetic fields. There was mention of PFAs. There are tens of thousands of synthetic fields across the United States at all levels. Federal and state agencies have the power to regulate these fields and have not restricted their use. There is no definitive research or conclusions that synthetic fields pose any health concerns. If there was, then they would not be allowed. There was mention of off-gassing at the last meeting. Many things off-gas when you get new carpet, that off-gasses. It's the level of what is being released that is evaluated from a health standpoint. As you can imagine, that this level is more scrutinized if you are indoors without, without ventilation. But there was a 2008 New York State Department of Health report that concluded that organic compounds emitted or off-gassed from synthetic turf or the infill material, that crumb rubber, do not pose an inhalation or dermal absorption health concern for athletes or users. And the dermal is the, the touching of it. So, I-
Do we know if all the chemicals that are used or carcinogens, if they're all like approved chemicals that are used in there? Because not all are regulated. So, is it a product that the chemicals that are used in the production of it are, are regulated by, by those agencies?
So, Ed, did you hear that, that question?
No, I didn't hear the question.
As far as what is used to make the synthetic turf, do we get product cut sheets so we know exactly what is in every part of it?
Definitely, yes, yeah. We would get all the product literature available that, that shows all the products that go into the turf.
Do you know if they're all approved chemicals that are used in the production of it? Like, we'll get a list, but are they all regulated?
I don't know if I have that answer. Do you have the answer Lisa?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite hear what the question was.
If you have a product list of the chemicals that are in the, the turf, do you know if all the chemicals used in the creation of it are all approved, regulated? Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that information, we, we may already have that. And they do, they do a lot of testing on those materials. We have a couple from one of the turf manufacturers, so we can definitely forward that on.
Okay, that would be great to just, I want to see what, what's regulated by the agencies.
Yeah, I think we can discuss the difference between regulated, accepted. Okay.
The reason I bring this up, and I don't know if anybody's ever seen the movie Dark Waters with Mark Ruffalo, but it's, it's very interesting, you know, to see what DuPont did. And carpet was, you know, one of the products where it emitted cancerous carcinogen agents. So, I just want to make sure that whatever we bring here is regulated and approved. If, if that's something we move on.
Okay, we can get that for you.
And Greg, we did, the, the information that I did get from the turf manufacturer specifically said it did not contain any PFAs. Their, their, their actual carpet contained no PFAs at all.
Okay.
What about carcinogens?
What about carcinogens?
Well, if they contain carcinogens, I don't think the SED or DOH were allowed to use those items either.
Yeah, well, just forward us the list, that would be good. I think it would be helpful.
Okay, next. So, that same report I mentioned concluded that there were no major differences in the overall injury rates between natural grass and synthetic turf. So, the consistency or inconsistency of a field can influence injuries. Artificial turfs are groomed regularly and have a consistent playing surface. Whereas, natural grass, you know, could be lumpy, you could have bare spots or poor grass coverage or puddling. So, basically inconsistent surfaces tend to pose a greater health risk to our users and our athletes.
Greg, you mentioned regular grooming. Does that, is the maintenance cost less on a artificial turf? Or, cause I would think it might be, but I don't know.
Yeah, so it's a beautiful segue into the next, into the next slide. So, yes, there are operational savings here. As you can imagine, there's no mowing, there's no trimming, seeding, pest control, field marking for athletic games or watering. So, these are some, some industry standard ranges here that for maintenance of an artificial field, the cost is in the range of $5,000 to $10,000 per year to maintain it. While grass fields range from $30,000 to $50,000 per year. All right, so the amount of cost savings is dependent upon the level of maintenance a district or a, a facility puts into its fields. You know, it's difficult for us to quantify an exact savings since our district maintains many fields and properties and we don't use our grounds staff just for fields. They, they do a lot of other things. So, we were, we were thinking that the, the range could be anywhere from about 75 to 80%. And I'm talking both labor and materials when you compare maintaining a synthetic field versus a natural grass field. So, Nick and Sonia, in his previous life, they had a synthetic turf field and he did not do, it just didn't need a lot of maintenance on it. There's just not, not a lot of work to do on it.
Would, would there be a way to quantify it a little more? Like, you know, with a little time, just to kind of think of how many labor hours or how much like actual, like to get more of a idea of the cost savings?
Well, so, the numbers I gave you are kind of like an industry, all right?
But was that with their staff, like handling, is it with their O&M staff? Or are they hiring people to maintain? Like, I didn't know what went into that 30 this.
It didn't go into that, that detail, but it kind of gives you that range of, you know, 5 to 10 for a synthetic and then 30 to 50. So, you know, if I look back, are we, are we, as a district, and again, I haven't attached labor numbers, because it's very difficult, because I have my guys go out and mow fields and fine, we're going to go over and it's going to take us an hour and a half to mow field two, but they're also doing a lot of other stuff. And how many times do we maintain it? It would be difficult to quantify, but there would be savings, okay? So, at this point, that kind of concludes this synthetic turf portion of the presentation. Before we move on, do we have other questions for either myself or, or Ed?
Could you just go back to, I think it was slide nine, just quickly? I just want to make sure I understand all the parts. So, the very bottom is rock, big rock.
Yeah, it's, it's not big rock. So, so this is your drainage area, okay?
But that's rock.
Yeah, it's, it's like a, yeah, it's-
And then the next layer up is also rock.
It's, it's, it's a smaller stone and that's, that's your, your choker level, okay? And that helps you fine grade before you put on your pad and then the actual-
But so the, the next one is, it's still smaller rock and then the pad, what is the pad made out of?
Ed, can you speak to the choker pad?
The pad is, well, the, the pad is made from rubber and it's, it had perforations and it's a lot of water to drain through it.
Okay.
And, and the function of the pad?
The pad is, is for cushioning. It's for player safety. It provides overall uniform, safe surface. The on-wood is in the sand and rubber with a good site. It's in the, that's contained within the turf.
Okay.
Like a shock absorber type?
Yep.
Okay.
Does the choker pad give you some cushion?
It does give, oh, the choker, or the choker stone?
I, I'm sorry, the, no, the pad.
Oh, the pad, the pad provides a lot of cushioning, yes.
Okay.
And the pad is reusable. The pad is, is good for two turf installations. So, when you go out in 15 years to replace the turf, the pad would remain in place. You would only be replacing from the back and up.
Basically from, from here up.
Okay, thanks.
The choker pad never needs to be replaced if it loses some-
The choker is, the choker- The choker is a choker stone, and what the choker stone does is it, it's a finer stone mix-
This one.
That does provide good drainage, but you use the choker stone to fine grade the field, so you get a nice, smooth, consistent, level surface to provide the pad, for the pad.
No, but the pad doesn't need to be replaced? Is that what you're saying?
No, the pad does not need to be replaced.
And never loses the cushiony or the drainage?
No, the choker stone is below the pad, so-
I'm talking about the pad.
The pad, he said, needs to be replaced after the second carpet goes down.
Oh, okay.
So it does need to be replaced, but just not the first or second, not the first time.
So you could probably get approximately 30 years out of that pad.
Okay.
Right, right.
Do we know how much we paid, or, I don't know, Judy, you might know this. Do we just re-drain all those fields? We did a lot of work on those fields, and not the last auditorium bond, the one before that.
Yeah, we did-
How much did we spend?
We did a Sand Master, which basically was this machine that basically cut slots into the sand, into the turf, and basically dropped, dropped sand in it. And that sand was connected, those rows of sand were connected to a different drain to basically help with drainage on that. It didn't, it didn't take the field out of commission for a very long period of time, and we were able to use it later that fall.
When was that done, Greg?
That was done, I believe, in the 2013, maybe it was even, it might have been the 2013 bond.
Do we know how much was spent on the drainage?
For that field specifically? No, because that was part of-
The big project.
Part of the larger site work contract. When we replaced a lot of the main lines that helped all those fields out.
Do we know, what did we spend on all of the drainage? Do you remember?
No, I don't. Because that was a multiple bond endeavor. We didn't do all the drainage in, like, the 2003 bond. You know, we picked away at it, picked away at it in each bond.
In the last slide, you indicated that there's going to be no field marking. So, but when we talked about it previously, we indicated that lots of different sports are going to be using this field. So my impression is that there's different types of markings based on different sports. If you have a lacrosse goal or a soccer goal, there'd be a different marking. So how does that really work?
Ed, can you speak to the various markings?
Yeah, usually the fields are marked for football, soccer, girls' lacrosse, and boys' lacrosse. We even done recently a softball field overlay with a backstop in the corner of the field, so we added another sport to a field. One of the things that, when we're talking about cost savings, one of the big savings is that you have one field that can be used, with one stadium that can be used multiple times over in an evening. It could be a 4:30, a modified soccer game, and then a 7 o'clock football game. Saturday, you can stack up two or three events and practices. So you can get a lot of use out of these fields.
But how does that work? If you have a football end zone painted, that's a different marking than what you would need in a lacrosse goal.
Yeah, so we had conversations with the athletic director. We would not mark this field out for football, okay? Those lines, it takes away, I mean, it's going to be well too busy. You do different colors to identify the different types of sports, all right? This field can be painted, though. We talked about that. So if we want a football game on this, we could mark the field out ourselves.
Okay. The intention's not for football, though. It's for lacrosse and soccer right now?
And field hockey.
Field hockey.
And PE, yes.
And what?
And phys ed.
Oh, phys ed, yeah.
When you say you can paint the field, are you talking about a permanent paint?
No.
You're talking about something that can be removed?
Yep.
Is that for each game, or do you have permanent markings of some sort on the field?
Yeah, so for those sports that we just mentioned, we would have permanent markings on those fields. Football would be the only temporary ones if we wanted a game on it that we would paint ourselves on the field. At least that was the initial thoughts of our little stakeholder group, at least at this point.
I just want to thank you for all the effort you put into this. You know, Bethlehem is 10 years behind in terms of this, and we need to get caught up. We went through this, I can tell you, we went through the same thing in North Colony, and all the concerns, you know. We had the same conversations. And right now, the field in Shaker is used from 6:30 in the morning till 9:00 at night, and that field was only used 16 times a year, like, 16 events a year were held on it. And now 15 events a day are held on it. And it's just, it's a game changer. I know, it's, I didn't, whatever. You can go with the pun or not, whatever. But it's, it's just, it's such a critical piece. I mean, I'm the guy in left field in this, but I would argue that we need two turf fields. I mean, just because they are used, and it's not even just, it's not even like, boy, you just like the lacrosse kids, or the, no, like, this is a gym class, this is a community event. You can't, you know, so many things get canceled in this town because Delmar is a giant sheet of clay, and everything, you know, is sopping wet. As opposed to, you know, you go out and disconnect it, and there's a little more sand, and suddenly events can be occurring a lot more. And so I just think, I think this is a great opportunity. I'm very excited that we're moving forward with this. This is awesome.
If you look at the previous presentation, we listed all the schools, and there's a lot in this area at this level that have synthetic fields. I know that CVA just approved their synthetic turf field, and eventually they're going to put a dome over it, is what I heard. So, we'll hold on the dome for now, okay? Other questions? Okay. So switching gears to the middle school project. Due to the consolidation of the middle school fax program, and the renovations that's going to have to happen to those spaces, we need to move the middle school tech classrooms. Taking advantage of this move, the middle school administration's, you know, looking to provide a better and a more conducive learning space for the sixth grade computer literacy program, engineering basics one and two. These spaces will have interactive whiteboards and technology, and will provide the possibility of an expansion of these programs. Specifically, they're in classroom, we're looking to renovate in the back, I think it's classrooms 125, 127, and 129. All right. So from now through July, we will have additional public meetings if necessary to refine the scope and the costs. This timeline has the board finalizing the scope and the cost on August 11th. A 45-day notice is required after adoption, which would place the public vote at around September 28th. This is the earliest we believe that we could have a vote. So just to clarify, that the vote is going to be dependent upon when the board approves the project. We will have regular updates, next, on the district website for a full list of the proposed projects and the five-year plan. Residents in the board are encouraged to go there as well. And it's up and running as of today. So next steps. Is there additional information that the board desires for an upcoming, future presentation? So our plan for moving forward, at least at this point, includes conducting what we're calling stakeholder group meetings to review pretty much some of the key project components. We have about 10 different groups that are planned. We already have the members, and we plan on meeting before the end of the school year. We'll continue to have public conversation and discussion with the board until the project is defined, and solicit whatever feedback we can. We are reviewing the project lists with each building principal, so they are aware of what is proposed at their school. And as a thought, you know, if the board is, if you're okay with this higher-level overview that we just completed, do we use a subsequent meeting to possibly take the top five components or projects at each building and present there? So I'll open it up for questions, conversations.
What were the big issues when the bond vote went down the last time on the turf field? I don't remember, I'm good. What was the biggest concerns? And I know there was a split on two, and that we thought had something to do with it, but I don't, I think they just took the turf field out for this.
Yes.
Yeah, it was separated out because there was a lot of controversy about the use of the field. So if you remember, the proposal at that time was to put it on the stadium field where the football field is, and the track was somewhat limited. And many of the sport groups, the soccers, couldn't use that field because it wasn't wide enough. So there was a lack of support by the athletic groups-
Okay.
-because of the location that was proposed. So with this proposal, it allows all those sports who wouldn't, could not have used that proposed field to be able to use that. So it encompasses the soccers, the lacrosse, the field hockey. And I believe field hockey was the only one that could have used that one because of the size. So that was part of the issue, that athletic groups were not on board with the proposal. It was really geared toward football primarily.
So will we have a problem with the reverse this time, where if football's not going to be using it?
Well, football could use. So the, football has a nice field. They have the big, the bleachers now. The, its use, it works for them. But if they needed, let's say their field was too wet for any reason, this field would allow football to have a game on it if they needed to. So it really works for every team.
I just don't want to see the teams like, okay, well, football, that field's wet today, we're going to cancel this game-
No, no, we would not do that.
-so we can accommodate, or, yeah.
But that was really the big issue, is that the athletic groups were not all behind it.
We were concerned that the, that the, that both issues would go, everything would go down-
Yes.
-if they were connected.
Right, so they were separated.
So we separated it out to make sure that we got what we knew-
Yep.
...would go through versus what had become a controversy.
Right.
And now you're saying you don't see that as an issue, so you're willing to put it all together.
I think that, that-
Well, there's also, you know, I talked to the head of the athletic association back then, and they felt that the reason it went down was because it wasn't included. So if it went as one, it would get passed. But there was controversy at the time, too, I think, over risks, you know, safety issues, which I think have been alleviated since then. I think there's been a lot more studies done.
There definitely wasn't the research that there is now.
That there is now. So I don't think that combining it would be a big issue, but if there's feedback from the public, that may be a possibility if we're getting it too much.
I would also say this to answer your question, Christine. I think that 10 years ago, I think it was seen by many communities as a luxury item, you know? Why are we, you know, we should be funding teachers and schools, and they're saying we're suffering, and then you put this beautiful turf out there, how dare you? And I think what's happened over time is the communities have gotten it, and they see how much use they get out of it, that like, everybody in the community can use it, you know? Because you were talking about, like, teams competing over it. Well, you're absolutely right, but like, in a normal grass situation, you couldn't put team after team after team on that same field. You couldn't stack them for four hours in a row, or five hours in a row, because you'd just have a pile of mud at the end.
Yep.
But on this, you can. So you could have, you know, a 3:00 practice, a 5:00 practice, have a 7:00 practice, and all those teams can use it, and it's not going to deteriorate the field. And so there can be multiple teams that access it.
Well, I think the argument's still there, though. It's, in some ways, it still is a luxury item, if we're looking at budget outlook in, you know, in a few years, which we just got through budget season, we were just talking about that. But at the same time, we're talking about gym PE classes using it, and it being versatile during the day as well, during the school day. So I think there's some academic aspects to it.
If this, if this were just like, like, a boost for varsity sports, you know, I think I would, I would say, yeah, okay, maybe it's luxury. But like, the fact that it can now be used all day, I mean, coaches were keeping their kids, their gym kids, off the premier fields, because they didn't want to ruin them. And now-
Right.
-you can use them. So now it's, you know, it's, it's a very nice setting for PE teachers.
Yeah, it was always a battle not allowing phys ed classes on our game fields. And of course, this one is closest to where most of the students are coming out, and again, pushing them farther out towards the woods, you know, towards Elm Avenue. Well, it takes longer to get there, less instruction time. So they're, they're very excited about this. And I do remember with that bond, there was lots of conversations about wants and needs. Is this a need? Is it a want? And you're right, at that time, we were maybe at the beginning of the curve, and now we're at the end, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we had an idea of what it was, and that we're not going to be facing the same type of-
Yeah, it's good to not repeat the same things.
Yeah.
It also looks like we're in a better financial position for this bond as well?
Yeah, overall.
Yes.
There's a big plus there.
Well, especially with, as Judy said, it's really budget neutral.
Going forward, and I don't know, this may need to wait until after you have your stakeholder group meetings, but I would be interested in hearing more detail about the theater project at the middle school, because that's the other, seems like the other really big piece of this bond.
The LMC is a pretty big-
And the LMC, yeah.
-the middle school.
So both of those, just kind of really what is anticipated, a little bit more detail?
We actually had, over the past year, year and a half, a number of meetings with that large, or those large groups. And we have detailed notes, so we could expand upon that on the next presentation.
That would be great.
Is it beneficial that we touch upon each school for the next presentation, as far as what, what might be going on there, some of the largest components? Just to give you a sense.
Yeah.
We're going to be touching every, every facility.
That'd be helpful to hear. I think it would be helpful.
The bigger scope items.
Yeah.
Not just for us, but for the community, because then they know-
Right.
-what's happening.
Because we just put a lot of money into the high school, and so they want to see what else we're going to be doing. I think that middle school should certainly be next, and then-
Yeah, and we could show, you know, some of the things we've done in this last bond, and, you know, for example, restrooms. They seem to always be on the list. We could do some before and after shots. This is what some of them will look like. So that would probably be helpful.
Yeah. And can we send out a communication to the community about the information that you're saying is now live up on the website, about the details for the proposed project?
Yeah, so I know we've done, once the scope is identified, I know we've sent a flyer out to the community.
We can send something out, though, just to let them, refer them back to the website to see some of this, and do some ongoing communication about it.
Yeah, I think the, earlier we can start letting people know that we're talking about this, and that way, if the community has questions about some of the projects, they can let us know.
And in terms of other additional information that we would like, I know that you mentioned a boiler in some building, I'm not sure which, but I'm really interested in energy efficiency.
Yep.
So if we could have a lot of information about that boiler and any other similar projects that we're doing, I'm not sure if we have any other things like that-
Yep.
-regarding a couple of different, you know, if we have different options, I really want to hear a lot about the efficiency of each of those.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Greg?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And thank you to our virtual attendees. Next on our agenda is our recognition of submitted public comment. As usual, the comments that came in, and there were three of them, will be attached to the minutes, so everybody can take a look at them in their entirety. We had one email that came in from Susan Broccoli with-
Uh, we had one email that came in from Susan Broccoli with respect to the senior class and senior class events. Um, and, you know, I, I know I've seen some information about the, some of the events that are, you know, they're starting to pick up some of the planning for a senior dance or, or prom, I think at the Times Union Center, and then the graduation, so-
And there is a website for, specifically for the seniors and senior families to go to that has the current information on there, that they can go to. And there's a form on there if they have questions that go directly to Mr. Dommel as well.
Great.
Is that on the school website?
High School Pay.
Okay.
Yep. Um, we had an email that came in from, um, Bill Davis, uh, requesting that schools be open five days a week for in-person learning for the rest of the school year. Um, and I know, Jody, you've discussed why that is a, that's still a challenge with respect to eating and transportation, and where teachers stand in, in the room, and I know things are changing daily-
Right.
-um, with guidance that we're getting, so-
Right.
-I know that's where, where things stand right now. And then the last email came in from Marcin Lee, and she had two questions. Um, one about the cost of the Bridging the Divide workshops, um, and Dave, I was hoping maybe you could respond to her on that. Um, and then she also had, um, some concern about, uh, about bathrooms, um, I think in response to the conversation that we had at our last meeting, um, about gender-neutral bathrooms and students using bathrooms, um, uh, with their, their preference, and I know, Jody, and if you wanted to comment on that, I know it's been happening for-
Yeah, for both bathrooms and locker rooms. So, this was a discussion in one of the board meetings, I don't know, six, five, six years ago, um, where students can, uh, use whatever bathroom or locker room they identify with. Um, so, usually what happens, the process, a parent may contact the nurse or counselor, or the student might, depending on the age, uh, and will ask about that. So, if there's any, and we have shared that out with staff, so there's, we haven't had any issues with it.
Okay.
So.
Great, thank you. Uh, next, item six, action items. Um, our first, uh, item A, a resolution to certify the twenty-twenty-one school district budget vote results.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. E, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Um, it is policy number twenty-two-ten. It should be a housekeeping issue, but, uh, when the, when the edits were done, uh, Roman numeral four, I'm sorry, Roman numeral five, bonding of personnel, um, you, we took out Roman numeral six, and then did not re, um, renumber the succeeding paragraphs, or the, yeah.
Right. Oh, yeah, it goes from five to seven.
Yeah. So, I don't think that need, I think we can vote on it and just have it noted that it should be a housekeeping issue to, to resolve. I don't think we have to go back.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Uh, seven, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday, June second, um, anticipating an executive session starting at six, um, and the regular board meeting, the open meeting, starting at seven. Uh, Monday, June seventh, at five-thirty, uh, there's an audit committee meeting. Wednesday, June sixteenth, uh, we have a policy committee meeting at five, anticipating executive session starting at six, and regular board meeting at seven. Um, and, uh, then Tuesday, July sixth, um, will be our organizational board meeting at seven, but anticipating executive session at six. Uh, seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.